Good evening, it's 5:15. We'll go ahead and call this board meeting to session. We'd like to welcome all of those that are in the audience with us tonight. If you would please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heidi, would you please read our school board norms?
Yes, our newly developed board norms are: To share and respect varied opinions and speak with a united voice once a decision has been reached; To prudently prioritize resources in a student-centric manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan; To exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings and a commitment to board education; To commit to assessing board effectiveness to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and community of Jamestown.
Thank you for that. We have nothing under public communications. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Moving forward, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Rogers, second by Bob. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on into our regular meeting, we have nothing under recognition or correspondence, so then we'll move into reports. Dr. Leck, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You do have the written report, and I'm going to focus mainly on two different areas. But very briefly, we've outlined a superintendent evaluation timeline that you can look to follow if you'd so choose. Just kind of breaks down in, you know, just to make sure that you can get to that March 15th deadline. So for us, that would be the March 3rd regular school board meeting. The bulk of my report, I'd like to spend on two items: confidentiality and behavioral health updates. So, we're pretty familiar with policy FGA. We've talked about confidentiality at numerous times in board education and board orientations, and I think we're well aware of what FERPA is. I think it's important, though, that we remember that as student privacy confidentiality, that is an unyielding dynamic, that is something that state and federal law governs. It isn't without, at times, it can be problematic, in terms of how we apply it. And so I gave you two different examples that I think are just important for context. You know, one example is the homebound education that was on the consent agenda that you approved. There are times when, you know, as soon as that document comes before the board, it becomes public record. And sometimes when things are public record, that can deny student privacy. So in this instance, we provide to you the, that we have, that we have an approve, the, an agreement to approve. I tried to give you a background in terms of what we are expecting in terms of cost. But if I were to share much more information, that would end up denying some student privacy or becoming problematic with student privacy. So that's one example of FERPA. It becomes difficult, I certainly understand that as a board, to say, hey, we have an agreement that's going to cost us some additional dollars, but I can't tell you about it. And so I understand how that can be problematic, but we do have to remember in terms of FERPA, you know, all of our students have the right to confidentiality and student privacy. This is one of those few times in which that's, that gets to be gray in terms of, in terms of governance. You get the information that you need, I can't give you specifics, or that could draw down to a different issue. So that's one example. Another, and this really happens more frequently than other examples, but it does come about in terms of peer conflict. There are, and I wrote this in the report, and I'm sure you read that, but, you know, we have to protect student dignity and confidentiality, of course, at all times. But that also then results sometimes in a limited capacity to share what's happened. It's very common and certainly understandable in peer conflict that both sides wish to know what happened. And because we can't share with both sides everything that happened, there can at times be an assumption that, well, it was limited, what happened, because I don't know it directly, or that nothing happened. And of course, those aren't the cases. Our principals devote quite a bit of time to investigation. They might be talking with numerous students, they might be reviewing policy. They spend a lot of time with peer conflict. And so the assumption sometimes can be that nothing has happened, when in reality, what we have to tell them is we can't share those things. Just like we wouldn't share what happened to your child with another parent, we can't then reciprocate and do that same thing. So that can at times be problematic, too. But like I said, it's, it's very natural for the other party sometimes to assume some things. And so the best thing that we can do as administrators is just share those examples and say, you know, we can't because we wouldn't do the same thing to your child, we can't do that to another child. And for the most part, people understand that. The other thing that it does is sometimes it prevents us, or it limits our ability to share necessary conflict, or context to understand the conflict. I like to say, there's one perspective, there's the other perspective, and the truth lies somewhere in the middle. It isn't always directly in the middle, sometimes it's skewed to one side or the other. But it usually, almost always, lies somewhere in the middle. And when you only are able to share one perspective, that limits your ability to help people understand the process that happened, the investigation, the totality of the investigation, the number of resources that were used, the time that was devoted to this process. You simply can't give that information because it violates confidentiality for the other student. So that does become somewhat problematic. Of course, we're committed to it. Like I said, it's an unyielding component of what we do. That's governed by state and federal law. But like I said, it does create some challenges. But I just think it's important for the board to, of course, always come back to, to the fact that we have to provide confidentiality. But I also want the board to understand that sometimes, and that it does become problematic in terms of the application of it. I felt it was appropriate to bring it up now because we did have that on the consent agenda with the home education piece, or the homebound student piece, that I wanted to utilize that as an example to drive home. The other is just an exam, just a few topics on behavioral health. That continues to be an area that schools, and Jamestown is no different, that schools across the country, across North Dakota are struggling with how to best support the behavioral need, behavioral health needs of students. We know from previous conversations that we've had, we haven't been able to access our school resource officer. Of course, we aren't paying for that school resource officer, but there's a limited, you know, there's limitations in the police force right now. They need that, they need Officer Staska working for the police department solely in their capacity because they're limited on people. And so we haven't had that, that resource. So we've been working, even before that had happened, we've been working with Pam Sagnes. For those that were able to come to the Innovation Summit, Pam was there as one of the keynote speakers. She is the Director of the Behavioral Health Division of the North Dakota Department of Human Services. And we've been working with Pam for a couple of years now. And there's been legislation that's passed in the last session that will eventually start to roll, and we'll start to see that. Really, we've been focusing on breaking down those silos that exist between providers and school districts. How can we better support each other? And I really believe that we're starting to get close to where we can see this bearing fruit. One example, what I gave you is the North Dakota's 1915I waiver, which is Medicaid. And so there is going to be, hopefully, some opening up of what can be billable to Medicaid. And that might mean some behavioral health supports. So we may be able to offer services and then have that billed through Medicaid, and then generate some revenue to help offset the costs. So there's a few ways that that can apply. It might be us billing Medicaid ourselves, which we do through the SEC. They help support that. Now that's one of the services that they provide to us. And the other might be, it might provide an opportunity for us to either contract with a provider, like, like I've outlined, why can't I think of the provider? The Village. The Village Family Services. That might provide us an opportunity to do that. It might provide us an opportunity to partner with Medallis, our clinic. They've already started to expand their own services to include chiropractic care, for example. That might be another one of those win-win situations. If they can make, have that billable, if that can be provided to the community, there might be an opportunity for us to partner with them and provide it for our students, too. And then, of course, it would be billed to Medicaid. So that looks like it's coming closer to the summer, where the state's waiver would be submitted and hopefully approved. And that's when we can really get into, involved in those conversations of what that might look like. But I will say, our SRO is one important piece of supporting our students. That's on the, that's on the end. I think we need to do, as a district, we need to make a commitment to provide something on the front end, too. Yes, that might have additional costs. Hopefully, we can mitigate some of those costs, things like billing through Medicaid when that opens up. But if all we do is, is focus on what happens at the end, you know, we're missing a lot of kids that need different supports. And so if there's a way that we can strategically look to how we can provide behavioral health needs to our students in a cost-effective manner, I just want to lay that out for the board, that that's something we really need to find a way to better support than what we can do right now. And none of this is set in stone. It is all very infancy stage. I just want you to make, I just wanted to make the board aware, these are conversations that are continuing to happen. I think at some point in the near future, it's something that we're going to have to act upon in terms of, you know, allocating resources for. I'd be happy to answer questions about that or anything else if you have, if you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Leck? Roger?
I just have a comment. I think that the way we're progressing in that direction, and we're going in a good, good direction to help those kids that are, that are needing that, so.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Leck? Diane?
Well, I think it's, you know, we've known for a few years now that it's, I wouldn't call it a national crisis, but a national concern, behavioral health among our student bodies. But what I don't understand is the optimism, which I appreciate, but I don't fully understand. From everything that I read, Medicaid is, is being put under stricter and stricter boundaries, and if anything, is losing ground. And I don't see how, is it going to be a reshifting of funds? Or is it going to be an addition to what they're, they're already funded to do?
Good question. It's, it's an extension of what's, what are billable services right now. And that's a waiver request that states have the ability to pursue. From discussions I've had personally with Pam Sagnes, who's doing the bulk of the defining, what that would be, it's pretty optimistic that that is going to change. And that will be billable. And so I, there's things that, I would say that's very likely to, to occur.
Any other questions or comments? Heidi?
A little bit along, just following up with Diane. Is this part of that, you know, that they're realigning the, what we heard in August, and then what we heard again at school boards, at the Education Conference in August, Governors Conference, and then School Boards Convention again, had pieces of that conversation in October. Is this part, kind of part of that realignment of the Health and Human Services area?
Yes and no. I think the waiver is a product of that realign, but it is not part of it. They are realigning because it's, it provides greater efficiency. But this is one of the outcomes of, at least a product of, of that realignment, to a degree.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Moving on. On our agenda, to letter D, Board Education. We have guests with us this evening. We have Jada Anderson coming in to visit with us about contextual competency, PLCs. Essential question number one, if you would please come forward. And I don't, is Joe going to be joining you? I don't know. I can... Okay, very good. Thank you, Jada.
Hi. So I'm just going to start by giving you a background of my experience with PLCs. So I went to the PLC Institute down in Minneapolis with our leadership team. And then I have the one-day training that came with Bob Carter on our back-to-school days. And then I also was part of the two-day leadership team training with Michael Mafome that was in January. So that's kind of my background. More specifically, I am an instructional coach at Roosevelt Elementary, and that's where my base school is. So I just mostly stay there. So to give you a little bit of information, I'm just going to talk quickly about what question one kind of encompasses, and then give you some perspective as to some of the work that we've seen done off of question one at Roosevelt. So question one is, what do we want all students to know and be able to do? With thing question one that has really pushed our teachers to be inquiring about the content at their grade level or within their standards, it has encouraged more priorities, prioritization of standards, which is taking a look at your standards and determining what is essential for the students moving forward within their grade, and then moving forward vertically into the next grade levels as they continue on in Jamestown. So establishing the, what do you have to know, and the what's good to know. Really hitting on those have-to-know things, getting them ready. The next part of that is unwrapping standards. And it really just talks about how, when you unwrap them, you really get to know what the standard is about and what it's asking the students to be able to do, and what kind of proficiency level we want to see those, the mastery at. It helps us also break our teaching into smaller parts. So how can I get to that standard? Because it needs to be more manageable than a standard. A standard covers a lot of things when, when they're in the classroom teaching. So breaking it down and managing it from lesson to lesson or unit to unit. And then the last part is just establishing learning targets. Standards can be very tough for students to understand, and at times, it can be very hard for teachers to understand what goes into the standard. So being able to be specific in their instruction. So Melissa Foster, a teacher from Roosevelt, first grade, wasn't able to come because she's at parent-teacher conferences tonight, but she just had a couple of things that she wanted me to share with you guys from her experience as a teacher. So what are the benefits? And she said, "As a grade-level team, I have been able to use the set aside time to collaborate in creating a strong learning environment. We are able to focus on our grade-level priority standards that are established by DPI, and then continue to do the standard work that the district grade-level teams have started." So we have started some of this work, but I feel like the PLC process and the questions have allowed us to be more focused and purposeful in prioritizing standards and where we're going with that for our students. What does the PLC look like? So she talks about how she has been able to unwrap priority standards and really dig into them to understand them better. So it means being able to measure student progress, and not just measuring it over an entire unit, but by day by day or within a week. So picking that standard apart to be able to unwrap and measure their tasks, creating assessments so that within both first-grade classrooms, we have a common assessment that's being used so that we can measure all of the first grade at Roosevelt, instead of one teacher following a set of assessments and a teacher following a different set of assessments. It has allowed both of them to work collaboratively, collaboratively, to create interventions or means of extension. So intervention as far as stepping in and catching kids sooner, and being able to intervene and help them where they have those skill deficits faster, and also extension activities to reach our higher kids that are exceeding expectations at those learning targets. What have we seen? Some of the things that she is very proud of is that they have a more timelier response to interventions. Before, we wouldn't be able to intervene, or we weren't ready to intervene faster. So she's able to intervene with her grade-level partner within units and help students who are not meeting those learning targets sooner, instead of waiting until the end of a test to see that they have a learning deficit. They have been able to create more frequent assessments, which has helped them identify students that are falling behind. And then that allows them to change the pace and the style of their lessons so that they're meeting the needs of their students in the moment, and not waiting till the end of the unit to make those changes. She sees a lot of increased practice and enrichment opportunities for her students as well. Some of the things that I've seen as an instructional coach, because I've been able to work with all of our grade levels, is that the teachers are really becoming familiar with their standards, and they're becoming more comfortable teaching it, too. They have a better understanding of what is truly expected of the students. And that's really good to see because then they're understanding it at the student's level, and where they're hitting that frustration, and teachers are able to step in and help them at that level, instead of, again, waiting until farther into their teaching to catch those, those deficits.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Anderson? Bob?
Maybe Mr. Haglund or Dr. Leck needs to chime, chime in on this, too. You mentioned grade-level assessments and such, which is great at Roosevelt. But I'm concerned that we don't have grade-level common assessments throughout all five of our schools. Are we working on that? Is, or maybe a better way to say it, do teachers have enough time to collaborate between the five elementary schools? So that when the kids get, come together at the middle school, they have the same basic foundations. I know it can't be exact, but basic.
And I can, I can start, maybe Joe can finish, too. You know, one of the things that Jada touched on that I think is important, the difference between a formative assessment and a summative assessment. We focused a lot in education on summative assessments. What did students learn, you know? Versus formative assessments, you know, where are they at in the process right now? It's, it's a test of learning versus a test for learning. And so those formative assessments are done at the grade level because those classes, those PLCs are specific to that team. And so that gives them a chance to look at how they're teaching, what they're teaching in their team, and then, then focus on what they're doing well as a team. But to answer your other question, yes, they are meeting horizontally and vertically. We're focused more on the horizontal teams. But maybe, Joe, maybe you want to talk about some of that and fill in any gaps I missed there, too.
Well, I think, you know, that was a, the presenter, we, the training that Jada was talking about, when Michael Mafone from Solution Tree was here in January. That was one of the things that we talked about, and one of the things that, that he presented as well, was that, you know, you have to start with those, those teachers that are teaching side by side the same content area. But I think the PLCs are truly a building-level development piece. But then there has to be that coordination across the district where you have multiple schools. So we had talked about, how do we take that, those opportunities that they have now to meet collaboratively at their grade, at their buildings, and create a structure where they periodically get together as grade levels to meet and share what they find out at their grade levels, and have some of those, those conversations as well. And that's, you know, honestly, that's one of the, the things that we're going to have to struggle with as far as our calendar, building a calendar that allows for that time as well. We have, you know, with the late, with the late starts, we're just really fortunate to have that in place now for the, for those grade level, or for those building-level meetings. But then how do we meet as, I know at the elementary level, they've had one occasion where they met as grade-level teams and stuff. We want to do more of that, but it's also making, making sure we have enough time for them to do that. So that was one of the building piece, building blocks that we talked about. And Michael will be back, he actually comes back in a week, a week from today, meets with us again. And, you know, those are the continued development of the process that we're, we're going through.
So maybe the short version of, you know, of all of that is, yes, it's important. We're prioritizing those building-level teams, and also recognizing that there needs to be district-level collaboration. But first prioritizing what's happening in that building in those teams. You know, one of the other things I wanted to point out, and Jada did a nice job of talking about this, I want to maybe touch to it again, and people might ask, well, aren't all the standards important? You know, why are we, why are we unpacking, or why are we prioritizing? Why are they essential? Well, not all standards are created equal. They aren't all as important as others. If you took every standard in every grade, you would never get through them all. And you'd be going to school until your twenties, in your late twenties. What you have to do is prioritize standards and say, this is to get, to be prepared for the next level, whether that's first grade to second grades, seventh grade to eighth grade, whatever it is. These are the essential skills that you have to get mastery of. You know, we're not talking about awareness of, we're not talking dipping your toes, and you're talking, I, I need to have mastery, or my students need to have mastery to make to this next level in these areas. And I think, I thought Jada also did a nice job of, of scoring the fact that, when we look at standards, they're very broad. And you don't, you have to break them down. And that's what teachers are doing when we're unpacking standards. We're breaking them down into manageable, digestible chunks so teachers can teach those skills to mastery, and students can learn them to mastery. And so you have to do that. And the only way that happens, either a teacher's going to do that on their own time, on an island, or they're going to do it in, in time embedded, for us, those Wednesdays, with their partner, and, or grade-level teams, and really spend some time digging in and making those manageable chunks. The best way they can do it, no one of us is as smart as all of us. So you work together and do that the right way. And that's why, one of, one of the reasons why question one is so important, because it gives people the time to break those, unpack those standards together, and, and, you know, like I said, into digestible chunks.
Any other questions or comments for Jada or Joe? Diane?
I think Jada and Joe probably both know that our superintendent, and as a board, we are being asked to really understand and support PLCs, and I'm trying to do that. And I, I, everything I see looks great. And one thing that Jada brought up that Dr. Leck has touched on is how to, you know, the standards are taking priority within a grade level. What I want to know, and he may have covered this, and I apologize if he has, but how are we working with those that create the standards? Are they on board with PLCs? Are we working collaboratively with them? It's kind of a political question, I suppose, but as a state, are we, are we all working together on this?
Well, I think that goes back to the, the work the state does for, when, going through the process of, of creating state standards. That process is very involved in terms of involvement. There's teachers on that group, there's administrators in that group. They, we actually had a couple of our elementary teachers involved in some of the assessment piece for looking at, at those. So there's a long process that goes in, and the state develops those standards. They have, you know, we're, there's never, several drafts that come out before the final one. So, yeah, our teachers are involved in our, the state level, at the state level, in some, in some capacity. And then there's always those drafts, an opportunity to have input. And then that goes to another, other groups that have input into that development process as well. Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's, it's going as well as anything does that tries to incorporate, you know, everybody across the state, and, you know, but, yeah, I feel like it's, we have input. And I think the teachers are, are satisfied with the standards. I mean, there's nothing that is, that's real glaring. I mean, for the most part, I mean, there's always little things that you like different or whatever. But in the overall, I think the teachers are satisfied with the fact that they have a beginning, something to work with to start, and that now we refine those and prioritize locally what we have. So again, you have that, you know, local control, you know. For the most part, those, like, again, when we met with Mr. Mafone last week, like he said, if you, if you put a group of educators in the room, and you put all the first-grade teachers together and had them go through and prioritize the standards, 90% of them would identify the same standards. There might be a few things that would be different, but for the most part, they'd pretty much agree that those are the most important things.
Jason?
So we're entering the fifth month, I believe, of PLCs. What would you identify as the biggest challenge that, that our schools have faced in, since we've? Because I remember Dr. Leck even in his, in his address this, before school started, it might get messy. started, it might get messy. So just, you know, out of curiosity, either at Roosevelt and district-wide, you know, what do you feel has been the biggest challenge or frustration for implementing these?
I mean, I would say the biggest challenge is just being inexperienced. We don't really know. And we're all within each school at a different part or in a different place, and we've moved at different rates. And we've had to take a look at the process and maybe gone backwards and started, not started over, but gone back and reworked how we've been doing it. So I think the hardest part right now is just figuring out where we're at and how to move forward within each of our buildings and within each of our teams. So I think it comes back to just being a little inexperienced and just trying to figure it out because it is messy.
And you feel you're getting what you need to address those? I mean, professional development, you know?
Yeah. So I've had a few more opportunities than most, but I've really taken a lot of information away from it. I would say that it was really helpful meeting as a leadership team in the middle of January. That was a very valuable experience. And from that, I think myself and Melissa and Mrs. Smith will be able to go back and kind of spearhead the next step for Roosevelt. Again, we're at a different place than other schools are, but with the support that we've gotten from Joe and Rob, I think that there's, we're moving in the right direction. It's just going to take some a little bit longer than others.
I think another piece that, like, you know, we, we try to respond to what we feel is the next, the next need of our teachers and administrators and stuff. Actually, when Michael Mafoney, Mafoney comes back next week, we've expanded those grade, those building teams to involve one more teacher. So there's another teacher involved and the teachers have more collaboration time there, too. Just trying to build that capacity and, and just the other day, as a matter of fact, just today, I was talking to Mr. Hardy, the middle school principal, and there's a, a PLC summit for the state PLC summit in Bismarck in March. And they are working through Solution Tree to bring in presenters and stuff. So that will, will probably give us another opportunity to get some more capacity built within our district and stuff. So, you know, we're just keep building and keep, keep working on that. And one other piece is that we all, it, it, one, one of the pieces we have in place for the PLCs is the PL, there's a PLC reporting form, which you just really tried to simplify for PLC teams. But part of that reporting is just what did you work on question-wise? Was it one, two, three, or four? Which question? But also the, a real important piece of that is, at the very end, we ask them, is there anything that you need support from an administrator or a coach for your PLC team? So they have the opportunity to, you know, to voice that, you know, that need and we try to respond to that, too.
A good example of that is, you know, a, a team might be really struggling with how to draft really good, common formative assessments. And so they might ask for some support and then a coach might come into that team and spend time with them. Okay, this is what that formative assessment might look like. Or they might have, I'm, you know, I'm sure there's been lots of questions on there. But, but I think, as Joe talked about, that's really an important aspect of this is, is providing each individual teams with that opportunity to get what they need. Of course, we're building capacity as a district. Every teacher got PLC, a full day of PLC training. A leadership team got more intense training as Mrs. Anderson was talking. And then that becomes their role to be that resource in their building. And now, as Joe talked about, we're doing that, expanding that leadership team when Michael Mafoney comes back again to say now we, we've had that group of three, now we're going to have another person that's coming in, just a, another opportunity to share perspective and to get a little bit of extra, or get a new perspective on what we're doing. You might have different questions than, than what those, that leadership team has. So just trying to make it a little bit better.
Okay. Heidi?
I just want to comment, you know, we've changed our schedules also to accommodate this. And the feedback that I've received from parents with school-aged children, the schedule of, of, with the late start or still being able to drop your children off at the same time has seemed to work out a lot better for families than when we would get out at the one o'clock odd time that they wouldn't remember that was the day that they got out. So that's just the feedback I've received. I don't know if anybody else has received different feedback, but.
Steve?
How are single-section schools doing this? Are they working together or utilizing that some other way?
Both the single-section schools have developed their teams across grade levels. So at Louis Lamore in Washington, instead of having, since you don't have a partner at the first-grade level or, or third-grade level or whatever, they work as a K1, 2, 3, or a K1 and 2 team and a 3, 4, and 5 team. And I'm not sure if both of them are set up exactly the same way for that grade span, but they do the partnering across grade levels, which is, you know, which is helpful because that helps with that vertical articulation piece where the incoming, the next grade-level teacher knows what's going on at the previous and, and you can plan that way. So that's how they accommodate for, for that size. And that's, I guess, a pretty typical configuration for small schools, but also for small departments and stuff. There's, you know, at the high school level, you have departments that have one or two people in, so they put some of those departments together to, to accomplish the same thing.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Mr. Haglund, Mrs. Anderson. We always appreciate learning what's happening in our district. So moving on into our agenda, we have nothing under old business. We'll move into new business. We have nothing under activities, building and grounds, curriculum assessment, instruction, or finance. So into the personnel. We did review the superintendent's evaluation timeline in his report. So Amy will be reviewing what sections have not been completed by you. I would imagine she'll probably get to you later this week, if not early next week. So please do look for those emails from Amy if you have any sections to complete and complete in a timely fashion so we can have that done per century code by March 15th. Any questions or comments on that? So then moving on in our agenda to policies, we, and procedures. We have, a vast majority of them are second readings. So I would like to group all of the second readings together. However, if anyone has, you know, with some discussion related to that, please let me know. All right then? Okay. Thank you, Roger. So Roger has motioned to move all of the second readings together. That is actually going to be letters A through M, then O, P, and Q. Can I have a second? Second by Greg. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Then moving on to letter N. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading of the rules of decorum at board meetings, B, C, B, A, dash, B, R? Motion by Steve. Second by Bob. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve a tuition agreement for a 10th-grade Pingery Buchanan student to attend Jamestown Public Schools for the 2019-2020 school year? Motion by Greg. Second by Heidi. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve a tuition agreement for a 3rd-grade Jamestown school student to attend Pingery Buchanan Public Schools for the 2019-2020 school year? Motion by Roger. Second by Melissa. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Then we have nothing under others. So then are there any items currently that you'd like to see put on for future agenda? Right? If anything comes to, please let myself or Dr. Leck know and we'll be happy to get that on. So then, moving on, we have meetings to be scheduled. We have the District School Improvement Committee meeting Thursday, February 6th at 3:30 in the district office conference room. This Friday, February 6th, we also have the NDSBA negotiation seminar, and that is in Bismarck. And we have several board members attending that, and I am thankful for that opportunity. Then on Monday, February 10th, we have the Health Insurance Committee meeting, which is held in the district conference room. And on Thursday, February 13th, there is the District Technology Committee meeting held in the technology lab. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is Monday, February 17th, here in the Thompson Community Room. And we also have a SEEC governing board meeting being held at the Days Inn in Cassaton on February 26th at 11:30. Are there any other meetings that I've missed? Okay. So then moving on, please remember to do the monthly superintendent evaluation and watch those emails from Amy. And don't forget to right-click on the adjournment. With that, the meeting is adjourned.